Good afternoon, everyone. This is the special meeting of the DeKalb City Council, October 30, 2017. Prior to our roll call and the discussion on the one agenda item tonight, I'd like to, in lieu of a police officer, I would be happy to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance if we'd all stand. Please move the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, from Deputy City Clerk Ruth Scott.
Jacobson?
Here.
Finnegan?
Here.
Marquardt?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Norrico?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Eight present?
Reading the item for consideration this afternoon for this special meeting, ordinance 2017-043, authorizing the acquisition and stabilization of real property located at 912 Edgebrook Drive, and authorizing an amendment to the FY 2017 budget. Prior to turning this over to our Community Development Director, Joellen Charlton, I'd like to remind folks, if you do want to speak to this item, the only item on our agenda this afternoon, there are speaker request forms in the back, please fill one of those out, hand it to City Clerk or Deputy Clerk Ruth Scott, and she'll get it up to me. We'll call those folks up in the order in which we receive them here. Also, as we've tried to do in the last few months, what we try to do is to make sure that we have public comment prior to discussion by the city council members. We will again follow that format tonight or this afternoon. It gives, you know, our city council folks a better idea of what it is that our folks are thinking among our constituencies. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to Community Development Director Joellen Charlton. Joellen?
Mayor, if I can, would that also be the time for members of the public to speak to items not listed on the agenda?
The item on the agenda is public comment following the, following council discussion. But as you know, I've changed that over the last several months to allow our folks in public comment to speak to the item on the agenda.
And if a member of the public wishes to speak to an item not listed on the agenda, should they do it at that time or would they do it after the action item? I just, I want to be clear for members of the public that are here to speak today. If they're, you had indicated if they're here to speak to this item, that we will do it before the council discussion, and if they're here to speak to a different item, when would you prefer to have that?
Oh, that would be, that would be following. I think what we try to do is close every council meeting. If there is something that's not on the agenda, they can speak to that. However, I would think that tonight or this afternoon's meeting will probably stay with this subject, I would, I would think. Alderman Verbic?
Mayor, would you like a motion?
Yes, I would like a motion to discuss this.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Roll call.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Jerry, I think that was just the motion to bring the item up for discussion, so I think now you're going to go to public comment before we discuss, if I understood you correctly.
So we're going to vote on what?
We're not, we shouldn't vote on anything just yet. We should have the, what I believe Alderman Verbic's motion was for-
I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon. It's been a long day. We had a motion on the floor, a second, to bring the ordinance to the floor. Now, I'm going to have our Community Development Director, Joellen Charlton, address this topic.
It has been a long day of meetings so far, right, Mayor? I've been in a lot of those with you today. Good evening, everyone. The purpose of this agenda item is to discuss the acquisition of 912 Edgebrook. And because the history on this property predates many of you on the council and just trying to track that from a community perspective, I did want to spend some time going through the history on this property to give everybody a little bit of background. In the fall of 2014, the city became aware of a building code violation at the property located at 912 Edgebrook during move-in weekend. As a result of those violations, the city made entry into the property initially at the invitation of several of the tenants, and then later with the consent of the property owner. During those visits, the property was determined to be in an unsafe condition and was posted as uninhabitable. The tenants at that point were relocated to alternate safe housing. The property remained posted as uninhabitable for a couple of years with the owner not undertaking any effort to remediate or renovate the property. The owner would not consent to further inspection of the property by the city, so the city obtained a search warrant for the property and completed a full inspection of that property in the middle of 2016. That inspection showed significant mold growth within the property, as well as significant presence of asbestos-containing materials in the construction materials. The city undertook as part of that process a complex evaluation of the building in the months to follow. The results of that evaluation were that the building was unsafe and that the cost to repair exceeded the fair market value of the building. Those are the basic tests that are required to pursue this case from a legal perspective for demolition of an unsafe structure. In April of this year, with authorization from the city council, the city filed for demolition of the building. A demolition case requires that the city establish that the building is unsafe, that the cost of repair exceed the building's value, and that the owner has failed and refused to place the building in a safe condition. If court ordered demolition is granted, the result is that the city can proceed with the demolition of the structure at the city's cost without paying the owner for the building. Because this is an extreme remedy, and that is the taking of private property without compensation, the city is very careful in its application and the courts are even more careful. The courts will always give the owner the opportunity to remediate the conditions. The tendency of the courts is to offer time to repair is even greater when the issues are on the inside of the building, which is the case in this particular property. The property has been offered for sale at various times over the past few years, but remains unremediated. The owner of the property contacted the city at some point with an inquiry into the ability to renovate the property and redevelop it as a high-density residential use. More recently, the city was offered the option to purchase the property at a greatly reduced price. The ordinance before you provides the cost of this property at $192,500. In the court demolition proceeding, the court has already granted the owner time to complete a voluntary sale. So this item is brought to the city council to give you two options to determine different outcomes for this property. The council can direct that the property be purchased, and in that case, the city will expend the purchase price and will also incur additional costs for asbestos remediation and potentially renovation or demolition of the property. I'll explain in a little bit, the costs to be incurred vary depending on how the city approaches the issue. Acquiring the property gives the city the ability to completely control and dictate the future of the property as opposed to sitting back and watching what happens. The city council, the second option is that the city council can choose not to acquire the property. This may result in the city prevailing in the demolition action that I described earlier, but that still means that the demolition costs would have to be incurred by the city council, so that has already been authorized by the council on your previous action. This option could result in the property being sold to a third party that redevelops the property as high-density residential, so that's something that we wanted to provide that option to you for consideration. Today's vote does not determine if the property will be demolished or redeveloped. It determines if the city acquires the property, which is the only method that's available to fully control the potential future outcome for this property. The monetary authorization sought in the ordinance before your consideration today only relates to the acquisition and stabilization, so not the demolition or remediation. The staff memo is clear that additional costs will be incurred if the city acquires the property and there is a later decision to demolish or redevelop. First, we want to just make sure we understand whether the council wishes to acquire the property. Second, the council has to determine what it seeks to actually do with the property, and that's whether to repair it, demolish it. I think the options are endless. And then, the cost associated with that action can be fully determined, and the council can choose to authorize them or not at a later time. The method by which this has been presented is intended to give the council full control over its decisions relating to the property. The timing of this property acquisition is based on the timeline of this matter. The court case that I explained started so long ago is up next week, or, I'm sorry, this Friday, in court for further action. And the city had only learned of the potential for the city to acquire the property at a steeply discounted price with a little over a week ago preceding this special meeting. The city does not have an identified funding mechanism for this property acquisition. There is no TIF district. We don't have that funding method available to us. However, based upon the potential for this property to have a significant impact on the Antiglen North area, we're bringing this forward to you for your consideration for acquisition using the fund balance. This is at your discretion and your preference. From a staff perspective, we believe that the potential for an adverse impact on the neighborhood if this property were reopened as high-density residential outweighs the impact on the general fund balance. And in a minute, I'm going to ask Police Chief Gene Lowery to come up and speak to that matter. Through the Antiglen North process, we can use that process to identify sustainable ways of addressing the need of the neighborhood in the area. So if at any future point during the discussion of Antiglen North, you want that task force or other people to evaluate, you can certainly direct that at that point. Through the fiscal year 18 budget, the city is also looking at ways of meaningfully addressing the long-term budget concerns, but that is a much broader discussion than this topic. We should also consider that the city's credit rating is influenced by more than just the fund balance. If this property is redeveloped, it will have an impact on surrounding properties and could impact community development and property values in ways that has far broader impacts on the city's credit rating and the quality of life for residents in the area. I did have a brief conversation with the Finance Director prior to this meeting. She's on her way over to the Finance Advisory Commission meeting tonight, but one of the things that she was able to take a quick evaluation and look at was the $250,000 authorized by this ordinance. She looked at it both in, from the perspective of the 2017 budget and the 2018 budget, and has determined that we will not fall below the 25% fund balance in either year. Gene, I'm going to ask you to come forward at this point and speak to some of the safety measures that we feel are important as part of this recommendation.
Thank you, Council, community. I think from my perspective, I just want to, I want to, I want to give you the information you need to hear. There certainly, this is a topic I could talk about for quite an extended period of time. So if you need to give me a hint to take you down a different road, do that, but let me talk to you from the heart for a minute. In this community, we know we're dealing with a significant public safety concern in regard to crime. There's been a variety of measures that have gone, been undertaken to address those, not only in the past, but are ongoing now. One of the recent ones you may have, you may recall is when we did a very proactive enforcement campaign where we arrested about 243 people in 27 days and served a variety of search and arrest warrants. That's just one phase. But putting those proactive measures in place is only one component, and I think that's the thing that, that both the council and the community need to hear. There is, there is a mindset or a group in the community that are very, I think overall the community is very supportive of law enforcement, but there's a group that says, "We can solve these problems through law enforcement." And then there's another group that says, "Well, we can solve these problems through addressing social needs, specific things in our community, mental health, poverty, rental property surplus." What I want to be sure that you hear from my voice is neither side is right and neither side is wrong. We have to have our eyes and our task in both arenas. This project of acquiring this property, and I can tell you, I went through this property when this whole saga began. There were people defecating in the hallway, urinating in the hallway, fire doors were chained, and the list goes on and on. Ceilings were collapsing, the place was filled with mold, it was uninhabitable for four-legged creatures, let alone human beings. And because we have to honor the process, because we are a nation of laws, and I believe in that, we're here today after a lengthy process through the courts, and we have some decisions to make. So here's where it's at for me. You recall, earlier this year, I arranged a meeting with police chiefs from university communities to discuss the significant spike in crime in 2016, bearing in mind that from 2012 to 2015, we had a significant decrease in most crimes except for one caveat, weapons-related offenses and gun violence. That's the story that goes from community to community across this land. When I met with those chiefs from Champaign, from Illinois State, Bloomington Normal, Carbondale, Southern Illinois University, and a host of others, they said the same thing, and I brought that back to the table. I've told you, I've told members of this community, in every circle, I've said the same thing. The most significant impact on crime is rental property surplus, bar none. That's just not my opinion. That's every police executive from every, from every university community that was in attendance to that conference, and we probably had eight there at that time, which covers pretty much all of our major universities, public universities. Why did, why was there a difference between what's happening in Champaign in a community that's economically flourishing and has a growing student population as opposed to what's happening in DeKalb? The story's still the same. In Champaign, it was rental property build-out, significant improvements and more housing projects being built, leaving lesser-quality projects out there to either suffer and die or somehow meet their mortgage. Rental property surplus. What's somewhat frustrating for me is this, and I know there are some property owners that are in the room, some I consider my friends, but, and I know they may or may not like what I'm going to say, but I'm going to say it anyway. When this community decided to build out west of Antiglen, and I'm not a negative guy, I'm not the guy who says, "Don't do this and don't do that," except when it comes to criminal behavior, everybody with a brain in law enforcement said, "If you don't do something with that property east of Antiglen, it will become an urban crime zone in the future." And all we did was sit back and wait, and guess what happened? That's what happened. Now, certainly staffing's an issue, I'm not going to deny that, that's a topic that will be coming to this council, but at the end of the day, we have an opportunity here. This is not a piece of property, in my opinion, that's going to do anything for this community if we try to put more people back into it, especially if we try to put people back into it by slapping a little paint on it and putting a little lipstick on a pig. We should follow the examples of other communities that have been down this road. Look to our neighbors, Elgin. Look at the vast amount of project renovation and/or teardown that they've done, and look where their crime has gone from the '90s to today. So, am I an advocate of taking away people's property without due process? No. But I am an advocate of people who don't take care of their property should not have the right to own it. It creates significant safety hazards for those who are here. How many examples across this country do we have to look at places that are not well-kept, who have inoperable fire suppression or alarm systems, that take no public safety measures in high-density rental properties, and look at tragedy after tragedy? We have an opportunity here, and I certainly would appreciate for the men and women on the street that are humping these calls and putting their lives out there on the line trying to do the right thing for this community and this council, that we take this as an opportunity to put, put this into our control and make it our choice what happens. And I hope to other property owners, it's a message. And I hope that, and I say this with some degree of reservation, because I know that over 90% of the property owners are good people and are doing the right thing, but there's a percentage out there, the minority, that aren't. And it's time for us to take action, and I think this is the first step. I'd answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from Council of Gene Lowery? Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Joellen?
Gene painted a very descriptive picture of that building, and I think that's something I hope sticks in your mind when you're considering the acquisition of this property. I know there are those in the community that say, you know, question whether the city should acquire property from people who have chosen to defer maintenance and reward them with purchasing them, their, purchasing their property. Gene's right. I think we really need to take a position on this property to have a positive impact. We are in the court ordered demolition process right now, so that, there's, those two paths that I outlined are going to continue. They'll either find somebody to purchase the property, and we'll take our chances with whoever acquires it to renovate it and add additional high-density residential back into that area, or the alternative is that we're successful in that litigation, and then we're still obligated to spend money to demolish the property. And that demolition then sets what happens on that property. I know there's people in the room that feel we should demolish the property, there's people in the room that feel maybe there's some other use for that property. Acquiring the property at this point puts you in the driver's seat and gives you the ability to decide which way you want to go with that property. And that decision isn't happening today. The only decision today is acquiring it and stabilizing it. So that's the only thing I would add. We can answer any questions. Dean is also here. He's been party to the lawsuit and also was part of the negotiation of the agreement.
I would suspect there probably are some questions of you, Joellen, and perhaps Dean, but prior to council discussion on this, I'd like to call on a couple of folks who have filled out a speaker request form. If you want to speak to this item tonight, please do see that Ruth Scott over here gets it. Our first speaker this evening is Lynn Physikas. Lynn?
I'm Lynn Physikas. I live in the 4th Ward. It is my opinion that this meeting is illegal under the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act says that when public notice is given, time, date, and location must be explicitly given. And I'm sorry, but putting your agenda on a letterhead doesn't cut it. So I will be taking some action, and, but before then, you know, I've got no problem with a discussion, however, I don't believe that it would be right for, for you to actually take action on the question today. My understanding is that there, there are prospective buyers for this property. As a matter of fact, I've been given a couple of names. What I don't understand is who's the gatekeeper here who decides who's worthy and who's not, even before it comes up for a public discussion. And this is not the only property that this is happening with, where the city picks and chooses who they want to buy that property. That does not seem to be a proper role. So I'm, I'm very disturbed about that. I'd be, I don't want to name names at a public meeting. I don't have consent for that. However, I'm going to try to talk to these parties myself and find out what the story is and, and come back to y'all when I, when I do that. Another big sticking point for me, and these concerns are in no particular order of priority, but we're saying that $192,500 is a discounted price. However, I understand that the market value of this property is $90,000, maybe a tad bit over that. That does not sound like a discount to me. And then my final, my final comment is that this, this is why we can't have nice streets. That's the first thing I thought of when I read the agenda, that we're going to take more money out of, for some sort of last-minute crisis emergency stabilization measure, putting out an agenda like the classic Friday afternoon news dump, and we're still missing critical information, I guess is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. I would like to address your contention that this meeting may be illegal or would not follow under the OMA. Lynn was kind enough to send me that concern earlier this afternoon. I checked with our legal counsel, and I also went to prior agendas of our city council. Our legal counsel, Dean Frieders, indicated to me that the address is on the, letterhead on the agenda item. Also, I had indicated to Lynn that I appreciated her notice, but in my checking with former or previous city council meetings, it was simply very similar to today's agenda, did not indicate specifically that it was in city council chambers. So I would assume from that, as simply a layperson tonight, that the DeKalb City Council agenda item, whether it be a regular meeting or a special meeting, it, it's a conclusion, almost a foregone conclusion that it would be of, at City Hall on the city council. So Lynn, I appreciate your, your comments, appreciate your points. Would you like to, to make another comment?
Just one quick one.
Please.
Okay.
And I think I had indicated those two points to you in my reply, did I not?
Yes, you did, and I thank you. However, just because all of the other agendas are incorrect, and it happened to be caught today, because people have been contacting me today, they, they didn't know what was going to happen, because a lot of times, special council meetings are not held at city council chambers. They're held, some of them at the library or NIU. I think there may have been one at the police stations one time. I went to one at DeKalb High School one time. So it's, it's not a given. Also, the, it's, you know, a letter, a letterhead simply is not the same as explicitly stating the location of a meeting, is where I'm coming from, number one. And number two, just because it's always been wrong and it ended up just happening to inconvenience and confuse people today, doesn't make it any less wrong.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Heinisch. Will?
Will Heinisch, a local businessman, landlord, and rental property owner. I sent out an email, actually this morning, to about 60 people, that I have emails that would be interested in this property, and I'd like to share some responses with you that they sent me back, because I was unsure- unsure, when I read through the backup material, where I would stand on this issue. And so, I sent an email this morning, "Good morning, looking for your input and thoughts on the city purchasing the property at 912 Edgbrook. Attached is the backup material, thanks, Will." And I did get probably fifteen to twenty responses, I'm only going to cover about ten, as some are duplicates or say the same thing. But some of the responses I've received were, "The city should only buy the property to tear it down, pave the area, and make it private, paid parking to get a return on their investment, reduce density, and improve parking for that area." Another one, "The city does not have enough money to buy all the property that are underwater and disrepair. The shit-city should not buy the property." Another one, "The $250,000 to $500,000 should be spent on security cameras to reduce crime in the Antiglen Corridor for immediate results to reduce crime, not purchase apartment buildings." "Will, personally, I'm not in favor of any government buying land and/or property in this manner, this is why we have building codes and zoning laws. If the codes that are on the books would have been enforced from the get-go, this doesn't happen. Let private enterprise buy it." "Hi, Will. Why, I do not like the thought of in any way rewarding landlords like Pat Bragg. In this case, I think it is a reasonable step for the city and its obvious goal to reduce high-density housing. Pat Bragg is a particularly troublesome landlord, get her out. My question is, back in 2014, an article on this topic, on this apartment complex, put its current appraised value at $64,000, and its possible value were, if it, to be restored at 1.3 million. Assuming Bragg hasn't followed through on keeping up her other properties, and we'll have to remediate asbestos, why the $192,500 purchase price? Also, since this is in the best interest of NIU's long-term goals, can they be tapped to pitch in the cost? In my opinion, the only salvation this town has is if more apartments disappear and/or a lot more students start coming back to NIU. Whatever the city and NIU have to do to make that happen, I'm behind." "Will, we do not need another site like Britannos Owns Site owned by the city." Another one, "My first impression, it is too high. Rewarding a party for neglect, et cetera, board it up and let the mortgage company, if there is one, for close. If no mortgage company, the city is paying too much. If it must be taken down, then the land value only for someone to build a much smaller building to match current code." So, those are some of the responses that I received, since I sent that email out this morning. Personally, I've kind of reached a conclusion at this point, that I think no decision should be made until three items happen. One, I think the city should consult stakeholder groups, including DARA, the task force that the mayor put together, NIU, Citizens, and others. Number two, I think an appraisal should be done. And I think the number-one most important thing that should be considered by council is a very clear plan of what is going to take place or development of the property. If we do not have a clear plan at this point of purchasing the property, the city should not purchase the property for speculation on the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Our next speaker is our former mayor, Bessie Kernopolis. No. We just are giving you a little professional courtesy there, Bessie. Make sure you bring that mic down. Thank you.
Oh, joy. Okay. Much of what Will has said is most accurate, and I agree with Lynn, being bounced around at different meetings, like the finance advisory meeting, which is going to be, see, it has the right place and everything, even though it should be here, but nevertheless, she's got a very legitimate point. And Chief, can't disagree with what you're saying, you know, it, that area is troubled. And that is why we have invested in a variety of programs in that area, one of which was crime-free housing, and that was supposed to have changed things. I don't know. It concerns me that a precedent is going to be set here. Maybe this is the solution for this particular building. How many more buildings like this are there out there? And are we going to jump in and do the same thing? Is that where all our money is going to go? Also, it seems like we have had a profound lack of continued tough enforcement over the years, and of late, and which has allowed irresponsible landowners to continue being irresponsible. There's no reason for that. There's no reason why the laws cannot be enforced. Big problem. Crime-free housing, I think, from what I hear, perhaps has been a huge disappointment and a huge letdown for the community. Maybe it is not, yeah, jot that down so that you can counter it, you know, I know I'm going to be countered on everything, but I'll still keep fighting there. So, if you demolish it, then what? Maybe a parking lot? Maybe a park? Somebody had mentioned something about a parking lot with, that might be revenue generating, maybe that might help. NIU, hmm. Maybe NIU should consider expanding in that area of town, possibly, to expand what their services are, you know, new buildings that they might need. That would have a profoundly positive impact on that area, and lessen the population density, or the density, which is indeed a big problem. And we don't need any more multiple dwellings, and yet we're continuing to say okay to them. Some of this stuff that we're doing, and some of the things that we're involved in over the last couple of years, don't make sense. Before you make a decision on this, you need to vet it much more thoroughly. You're not ready for making a decision. And another thing on a point of procedure, the ordinance has three or four items on it. In one ordinance, you're combining three or four items. The purchase of the property, and I'm not sure what, emergency stabilization, I imagine that's a different, you know, that's different from just the purchase. The amendment of the budget, and the establishment of a posted no-parking zone. How can you have four different items in one agenda, or in one ordinance? Trial looking that up in the future. That is not the proper way of filing, that is not the proper way of passing. Each of these items should be separately dealt with, you guys know that. This is not the way to file. This is not the way to pass ordinances. You put everything compacted into one ordinance? That's wrong. Makes it impossible to look them up. Check that one out, guys. Please, don't rush into this.
Thank you, Bessie. Our next speaker is John Anderson, from the 4th Ward.
Anyway, I'm like Lynn. The notification, I happened at lunchtime turned on the DeKalb station, and there it was. And I watched the Legals now ahead of time, because, to see what's cooking. But this didn't ruin my appetite, but I'm finding out, $192,000 you're going to pay for something that's worth 64? That's about the way you usually buy things with the city. And I noticed on the agenda downstairs for, some meeting was held today, and they're going to increase the sales tax. Well, this is it. You keep on increasing taxes, we can't afford the taxes we got here now, and $192,000 would do a heck of a lot more for the city repairing the streets than it would be buying condemned property. And if you start buying condemned property, you're going to have a line at the door a mile long. It's just, it's just wasteful spending, which there seems to be an awful lot of that right now. As far as the people that live in these places and the crime, that's another problem. And that's another problem that needs to be stopped. All this shooting that goes on, even before the weekend comes up. Next thing you know, it'll be like Chicago. And I hate to say that, but what happens if one of these guys gets a good eye and hits somebody? Right now, all they can do is hit the side of a car. But there's a lot been said here today, and I don't know what the big, I know what the rush is now, the court order that's coming up, and the chance to buy this at a real good rate, which doesn't make sense. But anyway, I just thought I'd come down and say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Prior to turning this over to city council discussion, I'd like to share a couple of notes that I have received from folks. Got quite a few phone calls, I did not transcribe those, however, I did ask the folks who sent these to me whether or not I could share those with you, with the possibility of Ron Nayler's. Ron, I'm going to read a couple of your points, if I may. Is that okay? The first one was from Scott Campbell, who's with us today, from our North 5th Ward. He had written a couple of emails over the weekend. "Thanks for your reply. You scheduled an emergency meeting at a time when most people can't attend in order to vote on spending a quarter of a million we don't have, and obligating us to another quarter million or more to acquire a $92,000 asset. And did I read right, that public comment is listed after the authorization item?" I replied to Scott on that point. "Within, with the information available to the public, there seems to be in lieu of pursuing the property in order to bring the building to code or sell it to herself, or sell it herself. On its face, that seems like the city is paying at least $400,000 to relieve a property owner of their responsibilities under city code." And that's from Scott Campbell. I paraphrase a little bit, Scott, from that. From Mark Sharvat, he says, "We're clearly putting the cart ahead of the horse. On Thursday, we have the perfect opportunity to present the Edgbrook proposal to the community at the AGN Community Meeting." And he questions, "Our credit rating is good now because of our reserves. City staff is pounded into our heads nonstop, so it's a no-brainer to conclude that eating up the reserves would negatively affect the city's credit rating." To paraphrase Ron Nayler, who is from the 5th Ward, is that correct, Ron? Okay. Our former 5th Ward alderman, as a matter of fact. Thank you for your service, Ron. He said, "A $1 payment would be too much for a piece of property that has so much liability and potential cost to remedy. You and the council's rejection of the purchase of 912 Edgbrook Drive is recommended and respectfully requested." Thank you, Ron. And this email this afternoon from Lisa Freeman, the president of Northern Illinois University, "It has brought to my attention that the city intends to acquire and stabilize the uninhabitable property at 912 Edgbrook Drive. NIU is proud to have partnered with DeKalb in the longer-term efforts to revitalize the North Antiglen Corridor. The stabilization of this property is consistent with the goal of neighborhood revitalization, and accordingly, the university is supportive of moving forward swiftly to this end. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, as well as for your continued willingness to collaborate with NIU." That was sent to me and members of the DeKalb City Council. Okay, having said that, we're now going to turn it over to discussion, questions from the city council members, and we'll begin with whomever raises their hand first. Alderman Verbic.
Is the charge for stabilization required if you would go right to demolition, for example? Is that part, that investment needed?
Stabilization is intended to shore up any windows or things that might need to be done, so if the council purchases the property and decides not to take any further remediation or demolition action right away, we would propose to spend some of that money to make sure that it's secure.
Thank you.
Alderman Faber.
So, I, just a couple of questions about the, obviously, asbestos remediation is not part of our discussion tonight, but again, that's something that we would look at in the future, and I guess it all depends, if we demolish it, we have to remediate asbestos before.
Correct.
And then, as has been stated, I, I too would like to see, you know, what the Antiglen North Task Force and the community would have for that particular building, however, knowing that the time frame that we have, that if the city doesn't purchase it, potentially someone else could purchase it, I see us as more kind of reserving that building, that space for a potential future project. It's not that we have no plan, but I think we're... I'm sorry.
It's not that we don't have a plan necessarily, but it's that we're going to mitigate the increased density, that if this should be sold for another apartment building, that we're going to increase density in the area, that everyone wants to remove density from the area. Just talking with others, I would love to see, you know, the area needs an immediate care clinic, potentially, one of our community partners might do a temporary clinic in the area. We've talked about the food desert, there are options to bring in other grocery stores to the area that could potentially be there, someone else mentioned a community center. If that building gets sold, there's nowhere to put that in that neighborhood, so this is reserving that piece of property, that real estate for that. And the only other comment I wanted to make is, I see we're amending the budget, but I would actually like to see the 2018 budget adjusted to, you know, obviously, we have a limited purse, so if we do go forward, I'd like to see the 2018 budget adjusted so that whatever monies that we do spend, that those are taken out of some other line items within the 2018 budget. Thank you.
Alderman Noreko.
I have a question, since a number of community members raised a concern that this might be opening the floodgates, or opening the door for other condemned properties to be acquired. How many other properties are in the process of, you know, being condemned, or? I realize that it's such a long process, but are there any others that are close to that issue, or?
We do have a number of other smaller residential developments, and all the ones that are coming to mind are individual units, individual properties. We do have some larger properties that we are working through code enforcement issues on, and some of them have a variety of issues, but none of them are at the point that they've been judged to be even eligible for demolition. Demolition requires establishing that the cost of repair exceeds the fair market value of the property. And so, we do have some properties that have significant challenges, we do have some smaller properties that we are working actively on demolition. All of those are one or two unit, but single-family houses that are either owner-occupied or one or two-unit structures. We don't have any large developments like this that are in the process or evaluated for demolition at present.
And it's my understanding that the city makes every effort to work with the property owner, to give them an opportunity to, you know, demonstrate that they will and that take action, and they are taking action to remediate the problems, and, which is one reason why the process takes a period of time, correct?
The approach that we take to all these properties is that which has been dictated... The approach that we take to all these properties is that which has been dictated by this council. So when we go into a property that has hazardous or unsafe conditions, we do not hesitate in making that determination and having the property be posted as uninhabitable. So going back to the start of our interaction with this property, when our inspectors went in and found the conditions there on the first day they were in the property.
That sounds pretty deplorable.
They took immediate action. In terms of what happens after that, once the immediate threat to public safety has been addressed, so if it's a building that's on the verge of collapse on someone's head on a public sidewalk, then we might have to approach it differently. But when the immediate threat has been addressed and the building is unoccupied, and the direction of this council has been to work with, or the direction of past councils, I should say, has been to work with property owners. I would also note that, again, from the commentary of now three or four different judges in DeKalb County that have heard these cases on behalf of the city, they recognize that what we're asking them to do is take away a private property owner's property without any compensation. And this is about the only circumstance in the law where that can happen. They recognize that as an extreme remedy, and they look at the statute itself, which indicates that the owner is to be given an opportunity to repair or remediate the property prior to a judgment of demolition being entered. And so the direction of past councils has been to give every possible opportunity and use this as a last resort. The direction of the courts in interpreting the statute has been to recognize that as a component of the statute and give property owners the opportunity. What we've presented to council tonight is the question of whether you want to acquire the property and have complete control over the future of this property. But we have followed the process by law, which does require notice and a period of time for abatement, and we have followed the direction of this council.
Okay. Thank you.
So even though this building has been condemned, if someone came along and said, "We would like to give you a million dollars for it," that stops condemnation procedures and the owner could sell it? Is that a correct assumption?
From a practical perspective, Mayor.
I'm using the million dollars loosely, so.
What, we've had these cases before, a number of different judges on different properties, and the city has been successful on every demolition case that we have brought. And that has been because in each instance, the property owners have not found someone to come in and remediate the properties. From a practical perspective, what the judges that have heard these cases have said, and consistent with the statute, is that they will give the owners an opportunity to remediate or repair the property prior to ordering the demolition. And only where the owners fail to do so, will the court order a demolition. They will give the property owners continuances over the city's objection to afford them additional time to remediate or repair properties. And they will give the property owners every possible opportunity to repair the properties. So if, as in this case, the present status, the last order that was entered before the DeKalb County Circuit Court indicated that it was continued to this Friday to give the owner an opportunity to complete a voluntary sale of the property. And the owner had come in and indicated they were in active purchase negotiations, and the court immediately gave them a continuance to allow them to continue that process. So yes, it is our expectation that when an owner comes to the court and says, "I have a buyer that will fix the property," the court will give them the ability to do that and will give them time to do that, as you can see from the procedural posture of this case.
Will Alderman Fagan go? Well, okay, Alderman Fagan, I.
Go right ahead.
He had his hand up before I did. You had your hand up first, but that's all right.
I just wanted to point out, you know, I don't think any of us up here want to take money out of the general fund that's not in the budget. I don't think none of us want to take any property off the tax roll. And of course, none of us want to be real estate speculators.
Some of you might not be.
I'm saying as a council itself. But at times, you have to make the hard decisions. I mean, this is for the safety of not only the neighborhood, but also for our employees, the police, the fire, the building inspectors. And overall, you know, we're not looking out to go out and start buying up property. That's not what we're here for. We're here to solve some problems. And this building has been a problem. If we hold off later, will it cost us more money? Could. But we're up here on a special night to make a hard decision, and I think you'll understand the way I'll vote. Thank you.
Alderman Jacobson.
I have several comments, as usual. Obviously, being in my ward, and not only just in my ward, but two doors down from my front door, I know this property very well. I think the first question that I would ask, that I've, when I've had discussions with some residents, were, "What would you do if this was the property next door to you?" And the property was effectively in legal limbo. It was up in court for years. It was both a nuisance and a public safety issue in your neighborhood, being that we have had people break into that building, being that there have been transients and migrants living in that building, being that there are a lot of kids on the block that could get into that building and create a major public safety concern for us. I mean, would you be clamoring for the city to do something? I know, and looking at the blogs and looking at the newspapers and looking at a lot of the comments the community has, the prevailing thought seems to be, "Stop talking and do something about it." And why are you on council? Why are you an elected official? Why do we have staff if no one's going to do anything about some of the problems we've been experiencing? And I think that's one of the major issues that's gotten us here, is a lack for many years, not just in the recent future, but decades, when there were concerns in the '90s, when property west of Antiglen was being built. The city really took no action to correct those problems. When the neighborhood started to turn and there was an increased rate of crime and undesirable tendencies, the city talked about it, but didn't take any action. Now that we're seeing another large peak and uptick in crime, with very high-profile cases in that neighborhood and in that area, the residents are saying, "City, why aren't you doing something about it?" Then we come and say, "Well, we have an option now to do something about it." It wasn't an option we planned for, because we didn't budget it. It wasn't an option that we expected would occur. It wasn't an option that was predestined or preordained or even on our radar up until a few days ago. And now that that option's in front of us, everyone's saying, "Oh, we'll slow down. Let's have more conversation. Let's talk about it." That's frustrating to me in ways. When I see what the city could have done in that neighborhood in the past, over the last 10 or 15 years, as properties have gone into foreclosure, as properties have either changed ownership or the organizations that were in some of the boarding houses moved out and left campus, that if there was a funding mechanism, if there was some city involvement, there could be a pretty significant reduction in density in the neighborhood at this point, and likely a pretty strong and successful revitalization effort underway. And we haven't done those things, whether it was because we were afraid to do it, whether it was because it wasn't a priority, whether it was funding, whatever issue it was at that point, we're in a situation now that, again, in hearing some of the community today, I don't think anyone disagrees that the neighborhood is too dense. We have an issue with residential density in this neighborhood. We have an issue now where it's so expensive to buy many of these buildings because of either renovations that have gone into them or because of the income that comes out of them, that it makes them unobtainable in any sense for the city to ever get involved. In this case, looking at this specific building, I appreciate questions of value. I appreciate, obviously, issues that the people feel that we're overpaying for the property. I think in looking at the actual realistic numbers on this property and looking back as early as 2009, when the building was worth an assessed value of $235,000, which would be $750,000 real dollars in 2009, obviously with inflation, you're talking over $800,000 at this point. When you're buying property, when you're getting involved in real estate transactions, the reality is that you have to pay for the building, whether or not it has value or not. If you're going in the suburbs, in the middle of Naperville, in a wonderful neighborhood, and want to buy a teardown for the house, you can't go offer the family land value. That's not a reality. That's not an expectation that's grounded in what goes on in the business and real estate transaction world. I've seen other questions this week about why are we moving so quickly? Why other "time is of the essence" clauses that are in the contract? Why are we jumping on this through a special meeting? From experience, being a professional in this field, once there is interest in a property by a city, the vultures swoop in. They show up with offers in hopes that they can sneak the property out to then flip it back to the city for even more money and profit on their side. Once you, as a city or as an entity, even as a private buyer, announce that you're interested in a property, there is certainly an apparent desire in the real estate world to create a sense of urgency. I mean, that's the reality of how real estate transactions work. Once there's competing offers out there, there could be a project that's sat in the market or a property that's sat in the market for years, and now that someone's interested, usually two or three come to the table. That's just how the reality of real estate works. You have to move quickly. Obviously, as a city, our hands are somewhat tied. We can't go to auction on the property. We can't go and do a deal without a public meeting, nor should we. And that's why it's important, when the deal is in front of us, to get out there and make sure it's vetted publicly and that we take a vote and that we agree on the direction we're going on. So I think that while some people see that as a nefarious way or the way we're doing it is too quick, I think it's the way it must be done in real estate, and it's a difficult position for the city to be in, being that we have to check all the boxes of open meetings and public vetting and public conversation, all those. It makes it rather difficult to compete in a real estate transaction, one way or the other. In terms of the building itself, again, I appreciate the fact that some people feel that we're bailing out this owner. I don't believe so. Again, looking at the assessed value of the property when it was occupied just a few years ago at $750,000, we're getting the property at 30% of that. Looking at the realistic market value with both the building and the business as an occupied building, if it were a currently operated, operating rental, whether it would be if it were today or if there was money put into it and it became an operating rental, I believe in our market, the building would be worth north of $1,005,000. In that context, we are getting a good deal on it. Not only are we getting a good deal on it, but the owner is taking a significant loss for their poor upkeep of the building, and whether that was because it was too big of a project, whatever the issue caused, the owner is sacrificing significant value in selling that property to us at the price we've negotiated. In terms of options and opportunity, again, I think that there is some discussion now. While I appreciate some in the community saying, "We need to have a defined course of action right this second for what we do with this property," I think we could. I mean, the reality is, we could tear it down and have a six or seven or $800,000 parking lot in that neighborhood that we never really recoup our value on. We could have a six or $700,000 empty lot that we could never sell for that price. I mean, if we wanted to define an outcome, it's going to be a losing outcome for us at this point, at this point in the discussion, without a doubt. I would like to see, and I've been pretty loudly clamoring individually to council members, to go out there and go through the process, whether it's an RFP process or an RFQ process or send it back to task force, that if we have control of the asset, what are the options and opportunities of this building? Can it be a community center? Can it be a medical clinic? Can, is there anywhere in the public or private sector that could take this building from us and do something productive that would benefit the neighborhood that's not a residential tenancy use? I don't have that answer. I don't think any of us do. I don't think anyone in this room has that answer. If they do, I'd be happy to discuss it after the meeting. I'd love to hear your comments, of course. But the options and opportunity only come into play if we buy it, if we purchase it through voluntary acquisition and the owner agrees to sell it to us. If we go the condemnation route, the only option we have at that point is tearing it down and creating a multiple-six-figure loss that's unbudgeted for in our budget. In that context, the other option, of course, or the other possibility, would be to keep it in the private sector. The reality of that is knowing the interest that's been in that building has all been residential tenancy, has all been very high-density residential use in that building, which, again, we've already defined as something that works against our goals in the neighborhood. So, again, I mean, none of the options are good or great. I think this option gives us the best possibility to see what the opportunities in that building are, knowing the eventuality that if there are none, then the worst-case scenario is we tear it down and make it a very expensive parking lot. This is the opportunity that gives us the ability to find out if there's some other opportunity or option with that property and harness the potential that the property may have. I don't see any real other option other than that of doing so, and that's why I have defended this and will continue to support it. Again, it's a hard choice. It's a choice that we have to step up and do something about. And if our predecessors had done this before us, it might not be such a hard one. But this is action. Action costs money. Action takes difficult choices, and I think this is the first step into doing something in both meeting our goal of reducing density, acquiring a property that created a significant public service burden, meaning the taxpayers were paying for it and probably will continue to pay for it, one way or the other, in terms of real costs to them, and take us down a path that, again, if there are other properties in the neighborhood that would be willing to sell at a fraction of their value, have to be condemned and torn down or otherwise need to be addressed by the city, we need to take action. The time for talk, unfortunately, is over. It's time to start moving in a direction that's going to solve these problems and not continue to perpetuate them.
And Dave, you and Bill Fanouk, and Second Ward Alderman, are in a perfect position, I think, to perhaps make this part and parcel of something that I feel very strongly about, and that is the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan. Regardless of what it is that we do with this property, whether we buy it and then decide that we want to do something with the structure, if that is possible, or whether we buy it, demolish it, in either of those scenarios, I think we, as part and parcel of the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan, can get input. It was suggested tonight, this idea might work or that idea might work. Then, you know, we are in a position also, since we would control the building, if the vote on this is favorable tonight or this afternoon, then what we need to do is to, how do we play that scenario into our Antiglen North Revitalization Plan? Does that make sense? Alderman Noriko.
Initially, I was not in favor of the city becoming a landlord. However, I really have become convinced, especially in thinking about the Antiglen North area, significant effort and time and money is being put into gathering ideas, getting input on projects that will help start the process of turning around that area. I'm not so naive as to think that anything that is done with the Antiglen North plan is, you know, going to create paradise on earth there. But as Alderman Jacobson has pointed out, the time for talking is over, and that is an effort. And... And I began to see, taking this property, purchasing this property, as being part of that effort, helping stabilize the area. Utilizing the general fund, that's one reason we had built up, worked towards building up the balance in the general fund. It's designed for emergencies, and special projects, and special issues. And we're going to have to be diligent as we look at the 2018 budget, so that we do, you know, continue to keep that 25% figure in mind. But I think this is a more-than-worthwhile project for, you know, being proactive, and hopefully, starting to work on turning around that area.
Thank you, Kate. Alderman Verbic.
Well, an important lesson to me is, how did we get here? So, are we doing, asking this of you all, are we doing things now to help avoid these situations going into the future, where perhaps a property owner's having trouble maintaining all of these codes that are required? Do we believe that we're doing things now to avoid these kind of situations?
I think there's a very good opportunity for a meaningful discussion by council on what your policy direction is today with regard to code enforcement. I think, as between every department that's here, from community development, to police, to fire, even to public works, we can give you different perspectives on the challenges to properties throughout the city, and different strategies for addressing that, and different levels of assertiveness for the city to take. And it may be time to renew those conversations and receive some further feedback from the council. We are continuing to, in every circumstance where we find something that poses an immediate threat to public safety, we take immediate action. But in the course of doing so, we have been posting more properties as uninhabitable on an annual basis. It's a growing trend, rather than a reducing trend. So we are definitely doing things differently than the city did 10 years ago. We're doing things differently than the city did six years ago, and we're continuing to increase the effectiveness of use of the resources we have for code enforcement. But I think it would be a good conversation to renew with the council.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fanouk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we've heard a lot of comments tonight from citizens and from council, and, you know, obviously, the Antiglen North area is, as Davis said, an area that we're trying to improve. And here's an opportunity where we can remove some of that density from this neighborhood, even with the building having been unoccupied the last few years. We can at least control what happens there in the future. And as you mentioned, Mayor, we can bring this to both the community meeting and the task force meetings, and talk about what might we see there in the future, whether it's a media care clinic, as Davis suggested, or some other community services could be there, even if it were to remain just a park. I had a landlord-owner in that neighborhood today mention me. The one thing he did not want to see go in there, though, was basketball courts. But a park for children would be much better. I'd certainly encourage that we go ahead and purchase it now, and then plan to demolish it early during the 2018 budget year. Along with Mike's comments on code enforcement, we know that several years ago that our code enforcement was lacking. I think we've improved it, but to borrow a phrase that Mike used last week, it's time to step up our game in that area, too, and hopefully, that we can act on some of these buildings before they come, become as immense a problem as this one is. So I'm going to speak in support of purchasing.
Thank you, Bill. Alderman Markwart.
I appreciate hearing everybody's comments on the property, and I believe that, you know, time has been given, opportunities have been given, to the owners to remediate, to fix the issues over the past three years. And we're far past any point in doing anything else with it. What I believe we're purchasing is potential, is potential to do something better with that neighborhood, do something better with that area, and at the same time, eliminating a potential, as the chief spoke, eliminating a potential for further issues in that area. And I agree with Alderman Jacobson. You know, it's action time. We're getting to the point where we're starting to take some real positive steps, overall, in this community, in various facets, various sections of town. And I don't see where we can pass this up for the potential of what we can have in this place. And, you know, time's been given. We've gone through the steps. Let's create something better. Let's do it.
Alderman Jacobson.
I did hear in one of Alderman's favor's comments, something that I think is important, and something I certainly agree with. While I understand that we budget conservatively, and luckily, in doing so, there may be some surplus at the end of this year, I would like to put an amendment, or offer an amendment to this ordinance, that in any case, that the general fund be made up, or made whole no later than fiscal 2018. So while I understand we didn't budget it for '17, we're in '17 still, correct? Fiscal '17. That we do have a plan in place, whether it is through surplus on the '17 budget, or a dedicated plan in the '18 budget, to make the general fund whole back to the 25% balance.
Would you make that a motion, please?
I would. So moved.
Any second to that motion.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, that we amend the motion, the original motion, to include what Alderman Jacobson just outlined. Any discussion on the amendment?
I just want to point out, in my discussions with the finance director prior to this meeting, and again, I wasn't able to get a lot of information, but I did ask her to evaluate this purchase, so this $250,000 encumbrance on both the existing and the proposed budget for 2018. And in neither case did it get us to a point where we were exceeding our 25% fund balance. So I'm not sure the way your motion was worded, I mean, because we're not going to exceed, or we're not going to go under the 25%.
I want to make sure.
Okay.
By amendment to the ordinance, that we cannot. And whether we do, that we can make it whole by '18, I just don't want a situation later where we said, "Oh, well, the revenues didn't come in quite the way we expected, and now we have a gap or a hole that we have to make up later down the road."
Thank you.
I want it by ordinance, that it's done correctly, and that it cannot.
As a point of clarification, because I want to make sure we understand exactly what the motion is. Is the motion to make sure that for both fiscal year '17 and fiscal year '18, that with this acquisition of this property, that that alone, that the fund balance does not fall below 25%?
Yes.
Understood, then. We are, there's not an issue with falling below the 25% with this acquisition, for either fiscal year?
Everybody understand that? Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouk?
Yes.
Markwart?
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Okay, we have had discussion on the original motion.
This would be Alderman Verbic's motion to receive and file as amended.
Right. Roll call, please.
Fanouk?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Given the timeline, we would request a motion to waive second reading and pass.
So moved. Been moved and seconded. Been moved. Alderman, Noriko?
Second.
Second. Been moved and seconded, that we waive second reading and pass this ordinance. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouk?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you, council, for making what has been a difficult decision, I think, for many of us as we move forward on this. Thank you, Joe Ellen. Thank you to those members of the audience, and those who have emailed, texted, called so many of us over the weekend on this particular item. Public comment now, any item that we did not discuss on the agenda tonight? Would anybody like to discuss that? Will Heinisch?
Will Heinisch, just a quick comment. I think Alderman Jacobson turned a light bulb on in my light, in my world, as he does for so many. But he made the mention of, I think it was an RFP for private industry to revitalize or go for bids for 912. I thought that was an excellent suggestion. And I would think, when this gets presented to the Antiglen North Task Force, or the Task Force, that there could be some backup material or information of how that would work, and some items of what is put together for an RFP or RFQ for that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have that community meeting this Thursday, is that correct, Bill?
Thursday at the 2nd, at 6:00 PM at Westminster Church.
Okay, and then we have the Task Force meeting on the 7th?
Correct, the 7th at 3:30 at the Calhoun County Outreach Building.
Okay. Any other items for discussion tonight? This has been a special city council meeting to discuss this one item.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you.